Right, okay. We are now fifteen minutes late for Cabinet, so let's make a start. So I'm just gonna not do leaders and mounts in front of five, but I'm just making an announcement and welcome our two new Cabinet members, Guy and Katrina, to the table. So welcome, guys. So item number one on our agenda for tonight is apologies.
Yes, I've had apologies this evening from councillor Neilson on the Cabinet and from councillors Gavin and Fisi.
Okay, thank you for that. And declarations of interest under A B and C on any item on the agenda. No, none on those. Minutes of the meeting of Cabinet held on the ninth of October, we happy to agree those?
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Four petitions?
None this evening, Chair.
Leaders announcements I agree to skip over, because I've talked enough in the last hour. Item six, which is a deferral from council to Cabinet, councillor Neil Bell's motion, weekend enforcement cover, a verbal update on that.
Thank you, Leader. As required by the Constitution, I wish to provide an update on the response to councillor Bell's proposed motion at full council on the sixteenth of October in respect of the provision of planning enforcement cover at weekends and bank holidays. Officers are currently engaged in the process of assessing the potential financial and any other implications of the proposal with a view to providing a full written report to Cabinet on the matter in the new year. As the Planning Enforcement Service is also about to be the subject of an internal audit exercise, I consider it would be sensible for the exercise to be undertaken and the outcomes reported back to the service prior to presenting the report on the proposed motion back to Cabinet.
Okay, thank you for that. Have we got any questions on that item? I can't see any. We will be eventually using the hands up system on the microphones as an urgent thing, because it is, that's the first thing, it is quite hard to see everybody's hands from here, so be patient with me. So no, no questions on there. So thank you for that, Linda. Item seven is council tax base twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and I'll get Will to introduce that, please.
Thank you, Chair. The tax base has been calculated at forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two band D equivalent properties, which is a decrease of one hundred and ten, or naught point two two percent on the current year. Although the position has remained relatively flat, there has been some movement in both the adjustments for the council tax reduction support and a reduction in bad debt provisions. Last year, losses on collection was increased from one point five percent to two point five percent due to the risk that KCC would remove administrative grants given to the council to manage the complex concessionary schemes such as council tax reduction scheme. KCC subsequently removed this funding, so the council has taken this opportunity to propose a new fairer council tax reduction scheme. It is suspected that this new scheme will increase the amount of council tax support issued, therefore, collection rates have increased back to one point five percent to reflect the increase in support. There's also been an estimate for five hundred and twenty-nine new builds, a band D equivalent of four hundred and eighty, but this and the increase in collection rate has more or less netted off by the increase in council tax support, which is why there's only a small variance from current year. Thank you, are there any questions?
Thank you for that, Will. Any questions from anybody? Yes, Paul.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. I noticed that there were about twelve percent of Ashford properties in band G and H. Colleagues will be aware that the rumor mill is rife, that doubling of the council tax on G and H is possibly on the cards. It takes about three minutes on an online tool to check whether you are in the correct council tax band. Therefore, I would just like to use this platform to urge people who are potentially at risk from a doubling of their council tax to check that they are in the correct band. It's a very easy process, there's a number of online tools that can do it. I produced a little leaflet for my parish council, I'm happy to share that if anybody wants it. So there we are, that's it, rant over, but there might be others, particularly after the budget.
No, thank you, Paul, and it is a good point, because council tax band does not necessarily reflect the people that are living in that property. So I completely understand where you're coming from, from that one. Any other questions? No, I don't see any on that. So we've got four recommendations on this item, are we happy to accept the recommendations?
Agreed.
Okay, so we've moved down to the financial monitoring quarterly report, and I'll get Emma to introduce that, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This report provides a quarter two financial forecast for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, highlighting a projected general fund deficit of seven hundred and twenty thousand pounds. This is an improvement of four hundred and eight thousand pounds from quarter one, which has been driven by increased income from off-street parking and leisure centre management fees. This report also has updates on the collection fund, capital expenditure, reserves, treasury management and debt write-offs.
Okay, thank you. Questions again?
No, I don't see any question, Paul. Sorry, we are, we are using hands, are we? I don't know if I can press this. Okay, yes, okay, just a very quick point on PIM house. I know it's been used for Ukrainian refugees, and now is no longer and will be used for homeless. I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to shout out for the team who have used it for that very important, admittedly national scheme of resettling Ukrainian refugees. So well done to the team who have done that. But my slight point on using PIM house in Charing for homeless is that many of them may be based in Ashford town and therefore have school-aged children who need to get into Ashford, not particularly easy from Charing. So although it doesn't need necessarily an answer now, I do want officers just to look at ways in which they can support people in their transport needs. But I do accept it's a KCC responsibility to get children to school where appropriate, but I suspect it's an additional complexity where they become homeless and whether there's school transport provided in those circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm raising PIM house, it's quite a good point, and PIM house came back to us in very good condition after the settlement, so that was good, there wasn't a great amount to be doing to that. Charing is an awful lot closer than out of borough, and therefore, and Charing is actually relatively good, still does have some sort of bus service, still does have a drain that's not too far away from that location. So in actual terms of sustainability, I feel that that particular example is probably one which is a better location than some that we are forced to use through the huge drive in temporary accommodation that we've needed to create. So on that particular one, but your point's taken, and I understand where that's going from there. Now, do you have any other questions on this one? Linda.
Thank you, Chair. I note the HRA write-offs, and I found it interesting that we've been carrying some of these for quite some time. I fully support the fact that we take a very pragmatic approach to this, but just wanted to ask, is it normal for us to carry debts for such a long time?
Did you want to come back on that, Emma? Or Lee?
Thank you, Chairman. No, probably not, and what we'll probably do going forward is have it in the same by regime as for council tax, so we will actually make an annual process, but the team's been through a bit of change in recent years, and it's a task that wasn't performed as thoroughly as we would have liked. So we will do it on an annual basis now to make sure we keep it in a tighter condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any other questions on this one? I don't see any, so I think seven recommendations on this, we happy to accept the recommendations.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. So more financial monitoring, this time quarterly report on the HRA. First one was general fund report, so Monica.
Thank you, Chair. Jo sends her apologies for not being able to make the meeting. This is the first dedicated financial monitoring report for the housing revenue account, focusing on finance and performance for quarter two for twenty-five, twenty-six. The report is split into revenue forecast, outturn, capital forecast, outturn, reserves and key performance indicators. As a reminder to the councillors, the HRA is a ring-fenced account, which means the money collected from council house rent and charges can only be spent on the housing stock and related services, and therefore not a cost to the taxpayer. Going back to the report, the HRA revenue outturn is forecasting a surplus of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand for twenty-five, twenty-six, an improvement of seven hundred and ten thousand compared to quarter one. The main driver of this surplus is a one million increase in the rent collected. The capital outturn is forecasting an overspend of five point eight million compared to quarter one. This is mainly due to seven point six being forecasted for the purchase of affordable housing, which was, which was approved at October Cabinet. Reserves are forecasted to be at three point eight million at year-end, which is above the ten percent target of rental income set, and whilst the major repair reserve will decrease due to addressing a backlog in major repairs, it will be added annually to ensure ongoing funding for planned maintenance. In terms of key performance indicators, rent collection remains strong at ninety-eight point seventy-three percent for the quarter. Void properties, sixty-three properties were returned to lettings, fifty-four new tenants has started, and the average relit time is sixty-four days. In terms of complaints, the level is high, mainly due to repairs, however, response times is improving, with new policies and resources planned to further reduce complaints and compensation costs. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Monica. Questions from anybody? I'll take Winston first, and then Paul.
Thank you, Leader. Just a question, from what I can see, we seem to be in a good position with the HRA. A question I've got, we're halfway through the year, how secure is those numbers?
Clarify slightly, Winston, when you talk about how secure are the numbers.
Well, when I always ask how secure is, how confident are we of those numbers going forward here?
Lee?
Thank you, Chairman. As confident as can be with information available within the September, unfortunately. You know, I think the HRA, there's a number of moving parts can move quite quickly, and not necessarily within our control, certainly around contractual work and delivering the sort of planned maintenance programme. So, you know, it's the best guess with information provided as of thirty of September. Hopefully, it's a really good estimate, and we'll see how that unfolds as we go through the year, but it's as good as it can be with information provided at the time of writing the report. Thank you.
I would just add further to that, that we have, our aspirations within housing generally are extremely high at this moment, and we're driving an agenda which is particularly hard and fast compared to the ones that we've done previously. We've just been through the full stop condition survey, we have a massive amount of work in front of us, and so I would fully expect there to be surprises along the way, and if those surprises come, we have a team that is aptly qualified to deal with that as we go forward and to revise anything that we need to revise along the way. The important thing at this point is that we are short of housing, we need more, our build programme needs to stay on track, and we need to continue to deliver as we go forward a steady stream of builds to boost our housing stock as we move forward and to ensure that our maintenance programme stays on track to keep that decent quality home standard up, and over the next five years to make that programme go forward so that everybody within our housing stock and our tenants have a decent quality home. Paul?
Thank you, Leader. I'm slightly, I just want to raise an issue about moving the service charge collection from in arrears to upfront. There's clearly going to be an impact, an immediate financial impact on tenants, where they have to pay twice, well, two, service charge in one year, because historically we've been recovering them in arrears, and now we're going to a contemporaneous billing of service charge. I think we do need to be aware that the cost of living crisis has not gone away, and therefore there is going to be an impact on tenants to some extent. So I would ask the Cabinet to consider staircase-ing it, maybe not doing it immediately, in one year, perhaps recovering fifty percent upfront, or maybe twenty-five percent, then fifty percent, then seventy-five percent. Have some awareness of your decision and the impact of your decision, please.
Maria, did you want to comment on that one for me?
I think we've, we've kind of signed up to look at how we can review how we charge for the service charges in year, because at the moment, what we do, although it's an in-year charge, we are recovering costs from a couple of years ago, and what, what we found was tenants were surprised at increases later on in the process, so for example, the fuel, the fuel inflation, that didn't actually hit people until this year, so there was a lot of confusion on why bills went up quite significantly. So yeah, what we will do is we'll review how we do it, we'll try to base the year's charge on an estimate for future years. What we won't do is charge residents for two years in one. If we do decide to catch that up, then we will do that over a slow process, but at the moment, we're just reviewing it, we haven't signed up to actually make any changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Linda?
Thank you, Leader. I just wanted to comment on how, how much easier I felt it was to understand HRA by reading a separate report rather than having it all put in together. It made far more sense to me, and I thank the officers for all the time that they've put into producing this report, and you, of course.
Thank you, Linda. Any other questions on this? Maria?
Sorry, could I just add to that? This is, yeah, it is the first report of its kind, so it's very much all around those finances. What we really want to do is bring a lot more of the performance information in there as well, so you'll have that whole picture and you can see how the performance is impacting on that, on that finance, but that will be something we develop over time, but thank you.
Okay, so I don't see any other questions. One recommendation, we happy to accept that recommendation.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. So next one down is the medium-term financial plan. Lee?
Thank you, Chairman. This report represents the medium-term financial plan for the period of twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six to two thousand and thirty-one, which we do note goes beyond the period proposed for LGR of March, April two thousand and twenty-eight. The current forecast is predicting a five hundred and ninety-two thousand pound deficit for two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and it's proposed that this is funded from reserves. The reason for funding it from reserves is proximity to local government reform. However, to demonstrate sound financial management, the council will develop a comprehensive savings strategy to bridge the gap and provide further options to be considered by the new unitary authority once it establishes its needs and priorities. The budget also allows for a two point nine nine percent increase in council tax, which will be an increase of five pound seventy-nine for average band D property, moving it from one hundred and ninety-three, fifty-eight to one hundred and ninety-nine, thirty-seven. Thank you, have to take any questions.
Thank you, Lee, for that. Any questions, Paul?
Thank you so much. This is not going to surprise you. I don't think it is right to put the savings strategies on hold. Absolutely understand the point about a successful authority and all that, but good financial discipline is not just identifying saving opportunities, but implementing them. So I, I mean, clearly we'll have an opportunity to go through this when we're looking at the budget for next year and so on. I just want to urge colleagues to have a active programme of savings implementations. Thank you.
So I would suggest, Paul, that we already have an active savings programme in place, and I think you hit upon quite a good point, is the fact that have those savings been implemented along the way? So is there any point at this stage to put in a new savings regime as we move forward, or should we be looking to the way that we're working? There's going to be additional costs along the way with LGR, and we don't at this stage want to start interfering with our resource that we have at present, because there is going to be in a year's time or less than that, there is going to be a great deal of additional work that we are going to have to do. Why would we want to lose valuable resource out of this council, including officers, where in the past we've lost half an FTE or we've lost an FTE along the way? I think that we're taking a prudent approach at the moment to saying, let's keep our resource in place, let's keep our structure together, let's not push our staff to try and squeeze even harder than they've been doing when we're asking them to do a big piece of work along the way. So I think it's a balanced approach that we're taking on this. I don't think that it's wrong to not look for deeper cuts, I think it's right to boost our staff as they are, we're going through a big period of change, and I think that to ask them to drive down even deeper sends the wrong message at this time. That's the way I'd approach it. I'll understand that during budget and budget scrutiny, there may be a different approach, but I'm right behind this at this point, because we've got a lot to do. So any other questions? Ben?
Yeah, I just really want to say on that, let's just not forget as well, we aren't shy of looking for opportunities for savings. I think, members might recall, there was a report at the last cabinet meeting about the monitoring centre, which is looking to actually kind of change the delivery model for the monitoring centre and deliver savings around that. And we've also got an exempt item on this report, on this agenda as well, which should give us an opportunity to save money in the general fund. So, you know, I think, I think there's a balanced approach that needs to come forward on this, and, you know, I know Lee's also gone through with services already and actually tried to take out some of the low-hanging fruit that he felt was there, and actually kind of, you know, drive, drive that efficiency in the service budget. So whilst we haven't got that kind of overt plan, we do have one, and we are working hard on implementing it, and we are trying to stay as flexible as we can as well. So if we, if members choose to do something, we will, we will respond to it.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any other questions? No five recommendations? Oh, sorry, Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought it would be useful just to give a quick update, and I don't want to go back over the ground covered by section one, five, or one, so just a moment ago, but just to give councillor Bart some reassurance, I did meet with the assistant director group this afternoon, and we have actually looked at how we're going to deliver this savings strategy, and we kind of adopted the approach of we will identify savings where they can be delivered now and makes sense and wouldn't have detrimental, detrimental impact on a new unitary authority, we'll obviously try and take immediately, but where we feel as if a saving, you know, should be decision, then obviously we'll flag them accordingly. Clearly, they will be reported back up through management team, and if there's a decision where the saving is prudent to take now, then that can happen, but I just want to give you reassurance that we are looking at this immediately, and we will have a range of options. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Five recommendations, we happy to support? Thank you. Right, okay, so we move down to the HRA business plan, and I'll let you decide who's going to take that from this point. Jo first?
Hi, thank you, Chair. So this paper presents the thirty-year HRA business plan, so going from twenty twenty-six onwards. As the leader alluded to earlier, we've got a very ambitious plans within our HRA. Our big priorities are around investment in our current stock, so obviously we've done an awful lot of very positive work since we had the self-referral to the regulator, including our full stop condition survey. We've now surveyed ninety-two percent of our properties to have a really clear picture, and what that's done is then that has then informed the business plan and the planned maintenance programme that we've put in there. So we've got a really clear picture and a clear focus on ensuring that we've got safe and decent homes and standard properties within the next five years. And then the other priority for investment is investment in the increasing in new affordable homes. So we're investing in the stock that we've got, and we're also looking to increase the number of social homes that we've got available for people. So as members will be aware from the paper that went to Cabinet previously, we've got an ambitious programme for one thousand and seventy new affordable homes to be delivered within the next seven years. The plan is viable, it balances, it's ambitious, as Noel said, but it will put us in a really good position, it will put us in a good position with the regulator in relation to ensuring that we're delivering the consumer standards and that we are also helping the people of Ashford by increasing the number of affordable homes that we've got.
Thank you, Jo. Monica?
Yeah, I will be explaining the financial side of the HRA business plan, so I'll briefly outline the financial position and key assumptions underpinning the housing revenue account business plan. This has been modeled to ensure the HRA remains viable, just as Jo said, and fully funded over the next thirty years, despite a challenging economic climate and the council's ambition to grow its own housing stock. We've updated our financial assumptions to reflect current projections for interest rates, inflation and government policy. The plan assumes rent increases in line with CPI plus one, prudent management of borrowing and a robust approach to risk, especially around interest rates and future government changes. Overall, the HRA is forecast to maintain a healthy reserve and support significant investment in new and existing homes while remaining responsive to any risks or changes in the wider environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. So questions anywhere? Winston?
Thank you, Leader. I've just got a question regarding voids. I saw, though, that our target is twenty-one days, and I think we're somewhere around about fifty odd days is our current performance, and I wondered, what are we, what action are we taking to bring that down? Because that seems a hell of a big figure to bring down from fifty-five or whatever to twenty-one for those voids, because that obviously has an impact on availability of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Winston. We've taken a massive amount of action on trying to get our voids down. Jo, did you want to come in on that? Or?
James.
Oh, James, I didn't even see you, James, sorry.
Thank you, Leader. So we have been taking some significant steps to reduce the overall void time and the backlog. We have suffered a bit of a perfect storm in respect to voids. We had a failing contract last year that was costing us a significant amount of money. We've subsequently changed that round, we've got a new contractor, but that resulted in us having a backlog of eighty voids. We've subsequently cleared that backlog. We have additionally cleared another hundred and seventy-one voids in the last eight months. Just to give you a figure, in the last week, we have returned twelve properties. We've got nine properties awaiting compliance, which will be returned in the next five days. We've got thirteen properties that are work in progress, that would be completed by the end of November, and in addition to that, we've got thirty-eight properties that are major works, which we're looking to clear by Christmas. So we are working extremely hard. In terms of doing work to continue to ensure that we bring that void time down, we're working with our housing colleagues to establish processes for enhancing letting and reducing void times. We're introducing digital systems, inspection modules, work in progress trackers, and sharing information with housing to enhance resident satisfaction throughout the void process and the moving process. We're introducing a new void standard as well, and potentially creating a clear and concise process to reduce the time that it takes between the end of the void process in terms of operational to the lettings taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I think that was a pretty comprehensive answer there, so well done for that. I said it was massive.
I'm impressed that he had everything.
Oh, that's our James.
No, you were coming.
Any other questions on this? Right, I don't see any others. I think we've got four recommendations, are we happy to agree these recommendations? So that brings us down to, well, off housing. Simon, are you introducing this?
Yeah, I want to come in on this one.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, very happy to introduce. Let's, there we go. So, I'm on, yeah, okay. So members will recall that an initial proposal to develop forty thousand square feet of light industrial units on the site was approved in principle by Cabinet in July twenty twenty-four, which was which was subsequently ratified by full council. Regrettably, this proposal could not proceed because at pre-app stage, the planners saw 40,000 square feet as overdevelopment, given the semi-rural location of the site and 20,000 square feet was therefore likely to be the maximum full area permitted. It was also suggested this figure might need to be reduced further to allow for additional planning conditions such as traffic, landscaping, parking and biodiversity net gain. At 20,000 square feet or less, the scheme became less financially viable, especially given the level of rent that could be charged for out-of-town units. The revised scheme to use the site as a consolidated direct service depot, bringing together Aspire, ABC Electrical and Housing Repairs will therefore bring an unoccupied Brownfield site back into beneficial use for council services, together with improvements in operational efficiency. The proposal provides for two warehouses, two warehouse buildings, providing a total of approximately 20,000 square feet with ancillary offices and a yard. This will also free up approximately 11,500 square feet of light industrial space at Carlton Road Industrial Estate, currently occupied by ABC Electrical, Housing Repairs and Aspire plus Aspire's large yard. Demand for light industrial remains strong and after the ABC Services relocate, this will provide the opportunity for the council to relit the units on commercial terms as well as offering the possibility of providing up to 20,000 square feet of additional units on the Aspire Yard area, thus increasing much needed employment space. A further report will be made to Cabinet regarding the proposals for Carlton Road in due course. Thank you very much. I'll now over to Shaun and Jake to take us through a little bit more of the detail. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. The establishment of a consolidated direct service depot at Nin Lane will bring together Aspire, ABC Electrical and Housing Repairs, centralising these services. And this will enhance operational efficiency, coordination and service delivery, strengthen collaboration, team cohesion and opportunities of shared learning and future-proof the council operations by increasing overall capacity and productivity, whilst at the same time freeing up prime industrial units at Carlton Road, as outlined by Simon. The established, the estimated cost of the depot is 2.63 million. When additionally, when additional expenditure related to the acquisition of Nin Lane are included, the model indicates a net present value of minus 2.62 million and an internal rate of return of 7.31%. The model also demonstrates that the scheme generates a positive cash flow for the council from its inception. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Steve, you had a question?
Yes, just page 117, introduction and background, paragraph six, the very last sentence. It says, "ABC will only install these being solar panels if it makes fiscal sense." I'd like that sentence removed, it doesn't reflect the philosophy of this administration and any other adjustments that need to be made around that. Can that be done in this meeting?
So I don't. So within the report is the report. Obviously, you're right, we need to send a message out to everybody else who's building industrial buildings to say, if you're building an industrial building, we need solar on the roof. I mean, that's part of it. I would expect that solar to be a part of this build and it shouldn't be a consideration, it should be an absolute must. So I think that if any of them. I think the recommendation gives it clearly that we will note capital budget for that, but I would remove from the recommendation the line, "Subject to the appropriate cost best analysis being completed." So I think what you're asking, Steve, is to modify recommendation four, to remove the line, "Subject to the appropriate cost benefit analysis being completed." That's where I see that from. So if that's what you're proposing, that we change that recommendation here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still not happy with this sentence being made public. Is it not possible to change that?
Well, it's already public. But the relevant point of this is the fact we're going to do it. So I would suggest that what you're ultimately suggesting is that we don't recommend, that we recommend that we are putting these on this building. I'm happy for that recommendation or are the members of Cabinet happy to change that recommendation? Okay, so are there any other questions on this? Winston?
One question, leader. I note a statement there about transforming where Aspire now with more light industrial units. A question I've got is, what evidence have we got that there is a demand for that, given where the economy is at the moment? It's nice to know that, but it surprised me a little bit that we're venturing into building more light industrial units because there's a market that will give us the payback.
I think the simple answer to that, Winston, is a waiting list. Am I right, Simon?
Yes, thank you, chair. At the moment, on our current industrial units, we have about sort of waiting lists where we could probably let each unit about two or three times. So the demand for industrial is well and truly established. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. I'm sorry, Heather, I missed you earlier.
Thank you, leader. So I just had a couple of points. So the first one is regarding the location. So I just want to say, obviously it's great to bring this Brownfield site into use. My concern is getting the staff to and from the depot. It is not a very nice lane to cycle down if you are a cyclist because obviously it's national speed limit, it's twisty bendy, country lane. There isn't a bus route. The bus route to Great Chart itself is constantly being cut. I think it's about three times a day now. And there is no footpath for walking. So I just wanted to highlight transport concerns. It would be great if there was a benefit to the wider Great Chart community. For example, you know, evidence that maybe if people are going to use the bus, a better bus service for the village as well. But, yeah, so that was my first point. And the second point is looking at your timeline and given the fact that we had a conversation about LGR before this meeting, by looking at this, the depot will be running for a year and then potentially LGR will happen. And we don't know what that future will look like, which I appreciate is a risk. It's just a statement more than anything.
Well, I'll take that in reverse because I'll take the statement first of all. One thing we must remember is that Ashford isn't going anywhere. Our housing stock isn't going anywhere. Our services will still need delivering and they will still need delivering from a local base. And so although things will change over time on day one of LGR, it's certainly not everything is going to change at the same time. So that one year won't be one year. Tracey spoke earlier on about safe and legal on day one. Pretty much most things will look the same on day one and they will continue to do so until they work out into a different thing as we go forward. A decent quality service yard of this nature gives a good base for a team within Ashford. I think the more focus we are on our services within Ashford, the more opportunity that there is that Ashford remains the base for those services and could indeed expand to deliver to the rest of the unitary as we go forward, giving greater opportunity for our residents, the residents of Ashford, the people that work here. And I'm very much that I'm not taking my foot off the pedal. We're still going to deliver our projects, we're still going to deliver our services and Ashford is still going to be the best that we are and we are going to lead the way for the new unitary as we go forward. That's my intention, that's what I'd like to do. I'd love to be part of that, I very much doubt that will be the case, but, you know, that's how we think. James, you're best placed to speak about our staff on there. You have a good relationship with all of them, I'd like you to come in.
Thank you, leader. So just picking up on a couple of those points, I mean, the majority of our staff drive vehicles and in addition to that, obviously the responsive repairs team have vehicles that they use on a day-to-day basis. As part of our process, we would consult with staff anyway as this goes forward. And in terms of the wider transport issues, they would be captured in terms of a planning application as we move forward as well.
Thank you, James, thank you. Heather, any other questions on the report? No, I don't see any. So we have five recommendations, recommend for as amended. Are we happy to agree those recommendations?
Agreed.
Thank you. So it brings us down to 13, which is to receive a note to the minutes of the Trading and Enterprise Board. We're happy to note those. And 14, which is Civic Events Advisory Committee, again to receive and note the notes of those. We're happy to do so. 15 is the schedule of key decisions to note and items of future meetings, again to note at this point. And at this point is to consider passing the following resolution to exclude the public that pursuant to section 100A, brackets four of the Local Government Act 1972, as amended, the public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following items as it is likely in view of the nature of the business to be transacted or the nature of the proceedings that if members of the public were present there, would be disclosure of exempt information hereinafter specified by reference to paragraphs three and five of part one of Schedule 128 of the Act. Are we happy to agree that?
Agreed.
If I could ask us to exclude the public? Thank you.